All right, welcome everybody to tonight's meetings. We actually have three public hearings that we have to handle before we get into the regular city council meeting. So we'll start with the first one. We could, we'll start with taking a role of the council members.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dijkstra?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Cory Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Here.
Henry Velicker?
Here.
Nine eyes, we have a quorum.
Thank you Barb. All right, so the first public hearing is an ordinance to amend chapter seventeen point one two three parent three, R three multiple family residential district pertaining to R three zero lot line. And this is a proposed ordinance number zero three twenty twenty four. I'm going to turn it over to Jared to explain what we're doing here.
Thank you very much Mayor. This is more of a cleanup item. So this is amending our dimensional standards for the R three multi-family residential zoning district. Previously, we had updated our land use list and we did to again increase housing availability and options, we did add zero lot line, single family homes as an option in the R three zoning district. After going through that process and after going through that and getting it approved, there were some dimensional standards that needed to be carried over to the R three district as well, which just kind of lessen the width and size requirement that the lots need to be since it's going to be essentially a duplex with a shared common wall that makes them single family homes. So more of a cleanup effort just to follow through on what was already adopted to make sure we're consistent across all the zoning districts. This section or this portion of the code is already in the R two zoning district, we're just carrying it over to the R three.
All right, Jared, thank you. All right, at this time then we'll take testimony in favor of this change to the ordinance. If you'd like to give testimony in favor of the subject, step up to the podium and give your name and address for the record to limit your time at the podium to three minutes or less. Anybody that'd like to give testimony in favor of? Any testimony in favor? All right, hearing none, we would take testimony in opposition to this ordinance change. Any testimony in opposition? Again, hearing none, I'll declare this hearing closed at six oh four PM. Next up, we have a public hearing for ordinance to amend chapter seventeen point three zero five zero lot line or common wall, single family attached development. And this is ordinance number zero four twenty twenty four. And I'll turn it over to Jared again.
Thank you very much Mayor. This one is in line with the previous one we just discussed. This is again relating to zero lot line or common wall, single family attached developments. We do have a section in our code that relates just relays exactly how these need to be set up. There was just some language that we felt was missing and as we were updating that one that we just talked about, we felt as though it would be best to clean this up as well to make it more readable and clear, not only to staff but also any developer looking to utilize this section of code.
All right, thank you Jared. Any testimony in favor? Again, step up to the podium if you do have testimony in favor of this amendment to this Any testimony in favor? Hearing none, testimony in opposition? Any testimony in opposition? Hearing none, I'll declare this hearing closed at six oh five PM. Next up, we have again a public hearing. This is an ordinance to amend chapter seventeen point three zero six of mobile towers, ordinance number zero six twenty twenty four. Jared, you're up again.
Another cleanup. This one's relating to mobile towers. So as we've had a mobile tower come through, we realized that our section of the code, there was a section in this code that was not able to be met, so we had to amend the process a bit. And now we're just coming to officially codify that change. So there was some changes in the in the language in the first two sections regarding new towers and the co-location, class one co-location, which involves substantial modification of a tower. We added something, some language in there to just make it more consistent throughout the code. But the big change was for a class two, class two co-location, we were requiring a conditional use permit. Now, the issue with that is there is a forty-five day shot clock on the conditional or on this class two co-location per state statute requirements. And there would be no way that we could get a conditional use permit through the proper process in forty-five days. So we were changing that by removing the conditional use permit requirement and just making it a site plan permit requirement, since it would just be really adding minor equipment to a tower anyways. So that's really the main change to this section of code.
All right, thank you for that explanation. Jared, any, again, we have anybody that would like to give testimony in favor, step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record to limit your time to three minutes or less. Any testimony in favor? Any testimony in opposition? Any testimony in opposition? All right, I'll declare that this hearing, this final hearing closed also at six oh eight PM. Next up is the city council meeting. Just give me us, me just a minute here. All right, welcome everybody to our regular or our rescheduled city council meeting. Today is Wednesday, April third, twenty twenty four, and it is six oh eight PM and I'll call this meeting to order. And as always, we will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to ask Barb, our clerk, to read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thanks Barb, and can you also take role for us?
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dijkstra?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Cory Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Here.
Henry Velicker?
Here.
Nine eyes, we have a quorum.
Thanks Barb, and would you also start the introduction of the department heads for us?
Barb Noack, city clerk.
Erin Johnson, city administrator.
Eric, you're up.
Eric Bailey, library director.
Jared Kittle, community and economic development.
Stephanie Reif, finance director.
Justin Behrens, director of public works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec director.
Brian Hozell, chief of police.
Thanks Brian. All right, next up, we have consent agenda. This is where we take the items that are listed on the agenda and vote on those with one motion unless council or staff would like to see one of those items moved to the regular agenda where we would vote on those individually. Anything on the consent agenda that someone would like to see moved? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Martin, that we approve the consent, is that right? Of the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried, regular agenda, you have that regular agenda in front of you, there's nothing additional that we need to distribute tonight. So again, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Olson, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried under non-agenda items. We have a couple of certificates to hand out tonight. The first one is presentation to Dave Peterson, city councilman under Dave Peterson, for his ten years of being on city council. Dave, thank you.
Want to give a little speech? I'm done.
Okay. And the second one is a certificate for Dimitri Martin for his five years of service on city council. Dimitri?
All right, thank you.
You want to give a speech?
No, I'm good.
All right, I'm a little nervous.
Been a few words.
Some of the other council members, they probably will want to give a speech. I know I would. Okay, great, thank you both of you guys for your service to the city. Next up, we have public input. This is for non-agenda items, so anything that's not on the agenda tonight can be brought Let's do public in first, since we started with public input. All right, so under public input, this would be for anything that's a non-agenda item. Dimitri, go ahead.
One of my constituents reached out and expressed a complaint that, and then he wrote up a brief statement of it that he'd like me to read into the minutes. So this is from William Herble at ten twenty seven, Charles Wright Drive in Wapaka. He says, I have a complaint about the garbage pickup service we are paying for. After emptying the bins, they often leave the tops open to rain or snow. Worse yet, they're tipped tipped over out into the street. I'm a seventy-eight-year-old man and can lift the bins off the ground, but others in our community are physically unable to pick them up. I lived in the town of Lind and used waste management for our garbage recycling service. They made a conscious effort to set the bins down with the lids closed, and I never had to pick the bin up off the ground. I wonder if the city of Wapaka could exert some pressure on the garbage service to be more careful after emptying the bins. Thank you.
Actually, I totally agree with that. Justin, you're the man.
Yep, I will relay that comment on and we will tell GFL we expect better.
Well, thank you Dimitri for bringing that up. Do we need a, you want a copy of that, Erin?
Yeah.
Or Justin?
Dimitri, that'd be great.
I think, one of you.
I got a couple actually.
Okay.
I'll take one.
All right, thank you. Any other public input? Chief Hozell has some public input for us tonight.
Thank you Mayor. Many of you have probably seen some articles online in regards to, as the city of Wapaka is ranked number one as the worst city to live in, and it also indicates that you have a chance, a one in thirty-three chance of being robbed in our community. We haven't had a robbery in our community in three years, so I'm not sure where they're getting those statistics, or a one in fifty-five chance of becoming a property crime victim. So last year, our assault, our stats that we shared at, when we did our annual report, our assaults were down eleven point seven six percent. Our shoplifting was down thirty-nine point five three percent. We did have an increase of thefts from buildings, they went from thirteen to twenty-three, and that was up seventy-six percent. And all other thefts in the city were down forty-four point four four percent. I did some fact checking in regards to the numbers they were using. I have no idea where those numbers have come from. I know Greg, our grant writer upstairs, had expressed possibly there might be some artificial intelligence that's maybe grabbing some reports. We also went online and used the same website. As for the most dangerous cities to live in in Wisconsin for two thousand twenty-four, we were not on that list. So those are your bigger municipalities, and I do have the stats and everything if anybody'd like to look at them after the council meeting. But I just want to reassure everybody in the community that this is a very safe place to live and a great community to work for. I'm very proud to say that I do work for the city, and I know a lot of members in here and department heads obviously live in the city, and I don't think any of us have ever really had any, any problems in the city. So I'm just not sure where that's coming from, but I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that you are living in a safe community. The only thing we do ask you is always just make sure you lock your, lock your car doors and lock your houses. So that's all that I have.
Thanks Chief. I can't believe that the internet spewing false information, hard to believe. All right, any other public input? I did, real quick, I did want everybody to remember that last night were elections. The results of those elections do not take place until our reorganization meeting, which will be on April sixteenth. So we do have one new member of our city council coming on, but that will be April sixteenth. And I think that's it. Nothing else for public input. Okay, next up, we're going to go over to Laura Colbert, and she's going to give the Parks and Recreation Annual Report presentation. Laura, thanks.
Thanks, everybody. All right, so we had another wonderful year in Parks and Rec. I mean, how can you not when you're trying to bring joy and fun to the community? I want to take us to page two, so Erin, if, or actually page three, if you'll take us there. On the bottom, you'll see a new team member who actually looks very familiar. We have hired Patsy Servie from, she worked at the library previously to be our new administrative assistant. So we're thrilled to have her onboard, and she starts on Friday. So if you want to come and say hi, I'm sure she'd be happy to see you. Few highlights from the year, we finished our Swan Park project, bringing the splash pad and our first adaptive playground to our community. And pickleball continues to be a boom, as well as coed volleyball continues to grow. And we also started our Parks and Rec, our adaptive program called Wapaka Area All-Stars for Parks and Rec, which is for ages five through eighteen. If you see on this picture here, the log rolling, although our amazing log rolling leaders have moved back to Madison, I left this picture in here to show that we are always open to utilizing new and fun experiences for our community. So if anything else comes up, we're always open to suggestions and, and possibilities to, to change or to give people different, different options in life. Page five shows our revenue and expenditures. So as you can see, our biggest revenues are intergovernmental and the youth program fees. The intergovernmental are the fees that we receive from our cooperating townships of Farmington, Dayton, and the town of Wapaka, so that their youth can participate in our youth programs at the same fee that the city residents do. And then our largest expenses are our parks and our youth programs. Moving on to page six, we have a lot of really fun facts for you about how long it takes to mow things, how many rolls of toilet paper we go through, and I think one of the most remarkable statistics we have on this page is on the bottom right, where it says there were, there were four hundred and sixty-five games played at Swan Park between youth baseball, youth softball, and men's softball. It's pretty remarkable when you think about how many games are played and how many hundreds of people are impacted at that park. Page seven goes through our facilities, and page eight, these are our new fitness classes we introduced in December and continue to have six-week sessions with. We have Zumba, Body Rocks, cardio kickboxing, and Butts and Guts. I can save this for the twenty-four report, but we just, we're going to start a, this Friday, a family cardio kickboxing class, so that'll be really fun to have the whole family involved. Page nine shares with you really the remarkable work that our grant writer Greg Roman does. Through these various grants, he's brought in a total of forty-one thousand dollars for our Parks and Rec department. So if you haven't thanked him lately, he deserves many accolades for the hard work that he does for our city and, and the many things that he brings in that we wouldn't otherwise have. And you can see what all those grants are for there. Page ten outlines our shelter permits that we've given. You can see July is definitely our busiest month, and our Swan concessions had a pretty big boost. The Lions Shelter, this is the first time we've ever rented that out, and you can see it had quite a few rentals in August and a few in September. And Eco Park, we opened up as a rental, and we had one, but hopefully that will grow. Our most used shelter by far is the Upper South Park Shelter because it has a usable kitchen, and that, that will go probably within the first week that we're open every year. Page eleven shares with you all of the assets all of our parks have. And then on page twelve, we have a picture of our new community for Splash and Play. And on the bottom of that, we have our new Eco Park Boardwalk. And I also highlighted a few of the other things that happen at Eco Park, such as we collaborate the library and put it a little free library, the Story Walk that the library also helped us install, and obviously the Boardwalk's complete. And then we also transformed the amphitheater. It used to have different tiers that were divided by mortar and, and rocks and some railroad ties, and those started to wear away, so we turned it into a grassy knoll. So it can still be an amphitheater, but we don't have to worry about maintaining the, the crumbling concrete. All right, so parks improvements, mentioned a few already, the community for Splash and Play, Eco Park. We also, in this photo here, are highlighting our high school students who helped us with our Swan Park Boardwalk. We collaborated with the high school on that project and look forward to many more collaborative endeavors with them. And we, speaking of the high school, we are working with the high school to build our new soccer shed. So we took one from Eco Park, brought it over to the high school, they stripped it, they're putting on new siding, they're adding a garage door, and really, really making it look nice and, and applicable for soccer, and then we're going to move that over to the soccer fields. Our Parks crew also updated the sheds at Swan, giving them new siding and roofing. And as of the printing of this, we had raised four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for our parks improvement at Lakewood Field. Facility updates also include, and this is just updates in general, we purchased a cemetery tractor in twenty-three, we paved the cemetery roads, we inherited this two-acre dog park, it's located by the recycling center. It has a small and large enclosed area for dogs, and, and is just a really nice amenity for our community that we wanted to make sure stayed in our community. And more unfortunate side, we've been cutting down many dead oak and ash trees in our parks and on our city grounds because we would hate for those to fall on people or on roadways. Many of our community partnerships on page fifteen are listed. We had a lot of really great partners during our movie nights, including the airport and all of the different businesses through the airport, and then Shindig and Farmer State Bank helped us with our August movie night. We had many wonderful donors for our medallion hunt, and Halloween on Main is, as you know, an incredible city endeavor that has many partners, Chamber Historical Society to name a few. And then we did our, our tournament for the virtual ice fishing, and, and first, or Bank First is always instrumental in helping with that. Community events, you can read more on those on page sixteen. And then seventeen are just some really great pictures from this year, some including Halloween on Main and movie nights and our ice fishing and medallion hunts. Eighteen outlines our senior center. We have an incredible robust group of people that are on the board. And then if you go to page nineteen, I want to highlight that in two thousand twenty-three, we had six hundred and seventy-six senior center members, and that number continues to rise. In fact, we've had more people sign up now at this time of year than we had last year. So we're expecting that number to get even closer to seven hundred in two thousand twenty-four. You can see the number of check-ins, and on the top right, cardio drumming is one of our most highly attended classes. We've reached sixty-seven in that class. So if you've never been to the rec center during the day during one of those classes, you should come. You won't be able to leave without a smile on your face because there's whooping and hollering and dancing, and it's just a, it's just a lot of fun. Page twenty outlines our youth center. So in case you're not aware, between six and eleven PM on Fridays and Saturdays, we charge one dollar for teens to come in, and we've had one thousand seven hundred and thirty-five teens come in throughout the year of twenty-three, and you can see some of our youth center workers there. Publisher Doesn't Love Me, so there were more pictures on this page, but they did not print. All right, so if we go to page twenty-one, you can see our enrollment for youth programs. Youth soccer is by far the outlier with the most enrollments. We were just one shy of four hundred in twenty-three, so we're hoping to break that barrier this year. Little League had one seventy-seven, swimming lessons had one forty-one, so we continue to get really good numbers. Chess in the spring was our only program for the youth that we did not run, just because I think there was a lot of people signing up in the fall, and then I think they just needed a break in the spring. Adult League participation continues to thrive. As mentioned, that coed volleyball is huge, pickleball continues to rise as well. And then on page twenty-two, you can see we had thirty-five total burials for the cemetery, and which months our KC did the cemetery burials. And on the very last page of the cemetery, which is actually page twenty-three, you can see the photograph of the beautiful new paved roads going through the cemetery, and then this gives you some, some statistics on that project. What questions do you have?
Halt. Very nice Laura.
Thank you.
So I know that not everybody got a copy. I think Laura's plan is to...
They did now. Justin went up and got some and brought them, so thank you Justin.
Everybody but the mayor got one.
I'll make sure you get one.
Sorry, just kidding. I like digital better anyways. Thank you. All right, next up then, we have unfinished, unfinished business. We have ordinance number fourteen dash twenty-three. This is the second reading of ordinance amending chapter eleven, City of Wapaka Health and Sanitation Code. And Jared, you want to just recap and then let us know if you've heard from anybody in the public?
Yeah, so this is the minimum standards of occupancy for structures intended for human occupancy. No comments have come in to city staff, I guess other, since the last council meeting and before that, so no additional comments. This is just looking to put into place standards for minimum standards of occupancy for habitable structures. And again, really the intent is to follow through to better blighted properties or properties on their way to potential blight as one of our strategic planning objectives. So happy to take any questions. I didn't hear any from any council members in between, but happy to take any now. The second reading, so proved, denied, could table, discuss again, so whatever the options are.
All right, so we'd be looking for some discussion or a motion? Anyone? Colin?
In the, I don't know how to reference it, I guess I would call it eleven point oh two, section one B, it talks about minimum standards for light ventilation, ventilation and heating, and references SPS three twenty-one dot oh five parentheses one. 321.05 (1). There's a notable exception within the SPS, the Wisconsin code, for habitable rooms in I'll read the exception. Exception A reads, "Habitable rooms other than bedrooms located in basements, ground floors, or above garages do not require natural light." My personal opinion, I guess, is that this allows people to finish their basement with rooms that, you know, don't have windows. And I've been in a lot of houses, when we were looking at houses, that there's quite a few that have such a thing. And within our code here, it appears within our minimum standards, 1102B, we're not making an exception for that. And I would suggest that we do to follow the code that's set by the state.
So Jared, can you respond to that?
Yes, I don't have all that information up in front of me, so I'm going to kind of go off the top of my head, so bear with me. But I believe the habitable room is the, any room intended for sleeping, dining, and one other one. So really, it would just be bedrooms. So there's rooms such as like sewing rooms or storage rooms or laundry rooms, things like that, that the natural light would not be required because it's not a habitable room. So that's off the cuff. I would have to look into it more to positively confirm that, of course.
I guess my suggestion and what I was hoping to do is amend this to add that exception to our code to match what we have in the state code. I understand that we can be more stringent than the code, the state code, but not less. And to me, this appears that we're being more stringent by not having this exception for the basement. So anyway, that was my thought. Certainly make a motion to amend it if there's no more discussion.
Yeah, I guess we can do that. We can amend it before we make a motion on the regular one, if you're interested.
Oh, yeah, I guess maybe I have to wait till you guys tell me.
I think you could do it this way. If you want to, if you want to make a motion right now.
Yeah, I would motion to amend our code, our proposed code, to add the same exception as in SPS 32105 to read, "Habitable rooms other than bedrooms located in the basements, ground floors, or above garages do not require natural light."
Good. Do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion by Colin and a second by Dimitri. You heard the motion, and I think you had Jared shaking his head. He's in agreement with that.
Yep, I can add that.
Recommendation too. So this would be amending the ordinance and adding this item to that. Any other discussion on that? Let's do it. We're going to do a roll call vote here on this.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
So that has been added to the current ordinance that you have seen printed. Any other discussion? Anybody?
I'm sorry, I spotted another one as I was just, as we were starting here this morning or this afternoon. If we go down to the ordinance and look at an area where, it's hard for me to get to it, but we talk about no basement space shall be used as a habitable room. And then there's three points, I, double I, and triple I. There's a point that references SPS 32103, Section 5. That section is in regards to the way that the window in a basement would open. And it maintains that it needs to be able to be open to be a bedroom. And then in the second half of our code, it says, "Except where there is a supplied some other device affording adequate ventilation and approved by the building official." It might be a transposition. The code from the state that talks about ventilation is slightly different. As I was quickly looking over this, it seems to me that if we just remove the part where it's talking about adequate ventilation, the total openable window area, which I think they're trying to get at is egress and ingress in case there's a fire, you maintain what is in SPS 32105. If we remove, "Except where there is a supplied some other device affording adequate ventilation," the two don't really go. 32105 is, I wrote it down here, "Exits from basements and ground floors." 3210305 is "Exits from basements and ground floors," and the ventilation is something different. So...
So you're suggesting to just cross that out?
The second part, "Except where there is a supplied some other device affording adequate ventilation." I don't think the two are supposed to go together. But I just noticed this, I mean, literally 10 minutes ago.
Yeah, again, I'll let Jared respond, but the way you're explaining it to me, there's no way somebody's going to go through a ventilation to get out.
Right. You are correct, that is most likely an error, and we can remove that.
We need a...
If the motion, sorry, yeah.
Colin, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, motion to remove the phrase, "Except where the, there is supplied some other divorce, device affording adequate ventilation approved by the building official," from this ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, so motion by Colin, second by Dimitri to approve that removal. Any other discussion? Barbara Colerole?
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, anybody else? Anything else? Anybody want to make a motion on this ordinance? What the changes?
I move to approve the ordinance as amended.
Motion by Dimitri?
Second.
Second by Dave Pete to amend ordinance number 14-2023. Any further discussion? Barbara Colerole?
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
No.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Eight ayes, one no, motion carried.
Thank you. Jared, thank you. Next up, we're under new business now. This has to do with a claim from Agape. It's an Agape unlawful tax claim. You can find that on page 62 through 76 of your packet. I'm going to have Aaron set this up. We do have some of our smarts in the, in the audience with us tonight, too, to help us with that. I'm also, and this is a little different than what we normally see at city council, but we do have some people from Agape that are in the audience tonight, too. So within limitations, we're also going to let them speak tonight, too. So, Bill, Aaron, you want to go?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Smith. Good evening, city council members. As the mayor mentioned, this material is in your packet, starting on page 62. This is a claim or a request from Kelly Cook, who is the executive director of Agape Help Center, or we'll refer to it as Agape. And it's in regards to a property located at 1401 Churchill Street. It's about 1.58 acres. The assessment on that property from, in 2019, was 1.483 million. Over the course of years, it has been reduced to reflect the state of that property or the condition of the property. In 2023, after the revaluation, it is stated at $477,100. And I believe there was Bomar staff that went through that facility at that time. The claim is that this is because it's owned by a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), but the property should not be taxed, and that's what they're here to ask. We do have Attorney Sorenson in the office or in the council chambers, and we also have Carrie from Bomar in the council chambers, as well as Kelly with Agape. You'll see attached to some of the requests from Agape, there were opinions asked from staff to our assessor. And you'll see that opinion on page 75 of your packet. And basically, I'll just summarize it, and what it says is, the years that it was requested, 2022 and 2023, those requests were denied by our assessor. And that is because ultimately that they were not using the property for the purposes of the nonprofit and the mission of the nonprofit. Right now, it's not really habitable, it needs some work. And in the determination of our assessor, that it, there wasn't the amount of work going on that needed to be to, to have a good faith effort in getting it to that point. We also asked our attorney to kind of review the request, as well as our assessor's opinion. And then Attorney Sorenson followed up with the next page, which is on page 76 of your packet, outlining, in essence, the same thing. So with that, I think that summarizes why we're here.
All right, well, thanks, Aaron. Carrie, is there anything you want to add to what Aaron has said and what's on your letter on page 75? And if so, could you just, you could sit next to the chief if you want to, or stand at the podium, whichever you want to do.
Just a little about me first. I've worked for Bomar for over 20 years, and we assess 100 municipalities.
Jared, can you pull the mic closer to you? Thank you.
We assess 100 municipalities across the state, so we have exemption requests coming across our desks yearly. It's not something we, we do take it very seriously. So, you know, when Agape filed for property tax exemption in 2022 and '23, you know, we did review it and ultimately, you know, decided both years, you know, they were to be denied, they weren't using the building. Under Wisconsin law, to qualify for property tax exemption, the property must be both owned by a not-for-profit organization, and it must be used exclusively for exempt purposes. They're not using it, and that's why we denied the exemption for both years. On the 2023 exemption request, they cited the use as religious. So, you know, again, under state statutes, you know, it must be used exclusively for religious, you know, exempt purposes, and they're just not. So that's the reason for the denial. You know, property tax exemptions are based on a theory of mutual considerations for the public relieves, an organization of its tax burden. Once the, you know, once the organization is providing a public benefit, we're just not there yet, so.
Okay.
That's where I stand.
Hold on just a second, Carrie. Someone might have questions. I think Colin does right away.
Could you repeat that last sentence? I think that's very important. Maybe you can't say it the way you just said it, but...
Okay. "Property tax exemptions are based on a theory of mutual considerations, that the public relieves the organization of its tax burden when it provides a public benefit."
Thank you very much. That's, I think, an important point.
Anybody else have any questions of Carrie? We might have some more, Carrie, but appreciate comments. All right, and then Aaron alluded to Attorney Sorenson's letter also, which is on page 76. Attorney Sorenson, would you like to add anything to what your letter says or explain your letter?
The only thing that I also think is important, in fact, that was just brought up to me tonight, and I talked to the state administrator, in order to file the claim, you have to pay your taxes first, and the taxes are not paid on this property for the year 2023, and that's important for you to recognize and understand also. At least, I talked to the city administrator, and he said, well, there's only $1,000 that's been paid. There's a $7,000 claim. You have to have paid before you could make the claim. Otherwise, I would tell you, all the claim requirements were made in a timely manner as far as statutorily they're there. But as you'll see in my memo and was said so eloquently, it's all a question of use. You cannot take a empty structure and say it's exempt if you're not using it to the benefit of the community in a charitable manner, as recognized by the statute as a charitable manner. And there's nothing going on that would qualify for that use. There's some case law out there that may lead one to believe that simply doing improvements on the property is sufficient. And the reality is, that case law isn't, first and foremost, the case law is not controlling in this situation because there's not a continual format of use. There's not plans, there's not designs that show a use. The only permit that's ever been pulled on this property was to repair the roof. It wasn't to develop a setting that could be of benefit to the public, and that's really where the statutory language is there. So I think you've got a technical defect, and you also have a very sound, logical decision that was made by your appraiser. And I think you also have an obligation to uphold your appraiser. She doesn't have, or the company doesn't have the burden, the taxpayer has the burden of establishing that they are using this property for charitable purposes, and I don't think that's been met under the law. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Hold on just a second, see if anybody has any questions for you. I guess not at this time. Thank you. Next, Aaron, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Smith. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Carrie. I just want to just mention something that Steve just brought up. You know, we were just looking at the property tax bills and the assessments and his, to his point about the taxes not being paid. This is something that Kelly and I have talked about in the past, too. Kelly had asked questions. There was a time in which previous years were not paid yet because was wondering what was happening with everything. He did make those once he was informed of that, so he was up to date. I'm just going off of what the tax bill says now, off of, off of the county records. I also want to mention something that I think is very important. The type of, this can probably feel like we're trying to throw up hoops as staff and, or barriers, and that's not the case at all. I want Kelly to know, and I want everyone at Agape to know, the council to know, that we very, very much appreciate the efforts that they put in to make our community better. They are trying to work and make it better for victims of domestic abuse, people with AODA problems, and even more, I know this facility, they wanted to expand on what they're doing now, and I, we all appreciate that. And at the same time, you know, as staff, we have the responsibility to administer the codes and the state laws and our ordinances as we best understand them. And when we're unsure, we also rely on our professionals, in this case, our assessors and our legal. So, and I also want to mention, sometimes that can feel like just words, but, you know, I think it's important to note, too, that our grant writer Greg, I believed, worked with Agape in 2021 on a couple of grants. I think successfully actually received $35,000 towards the project, and I think another one was unfortunately denied, but I just don't want that to get lost, so.
Thanks, Aaron. All right, so Kelly, I know you're here tonight. If you would, just introduce yourself, and anybody else that comes up to the podium, please just introduce yourself, and go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Kelly Cook. I'm the executive director for the Agape Help Center. And yeah, we've been working on this for a while, and as in the taxes, you said they weren't paid. We paid over $70,000 in taxes, and the current taxes, we actually paid $1,000, and they said if we make a payment plan with them on this current taxes, then we're all at the current and set. So we've done every compliance on our past taxes and all that stuff. And like I said, we paid over $70,000. And that take away money and proceeds that are supposed to be going in the building to repair the building, as in us currently not being in the building. When I looked up the statutes, first, when I looked up the statutes, it shows in there that where churches and other charitable organizations can actually get their nonprofit put in place while they're remodeling and working on the building. And that's exactly what we did. We stuck over $130,000 into the roof, completely, did over 14,000 square foot of roof on the place, and did a bunch of other remodeling and things we needed to do there. So we... do there. So, we definitely have made steps to be remodeling and working on the building to use the building, and also, as in trying to get permits and everything else. We went through with Jared and you, Aaron. Also, we sat down, went through it all, and Jared, we said that we're going to put it into a residential R-three with a contingent, contingency use permit for what we needed, and that's what we put in place. It was in a nursing home, which is a, I forget the code number, whatever, but we changed it to R-three and put it in a contingency use. Then it goes over to the building inspector, Jane, and Jane said absolutely not. She will not allow that, that zoning to be put in place or give us a building permit for that. Then there's a roadblock of that, and it wasted more months and months and months of all of our time and money and efforts. We've gone through all the steps trying to, trying to get into this facility, so I think we've met all those things that were just brought up. I don't see anything there that we haven't complied with. And like I said, we paid twenty-eight thousand dollars even one year for taxes that, on a vacant building that was sitting there for years, that shouldn't have been worth, I had comps on it, and it shouldn't have been worth a few thousand dollars taxes. So, I think we've addressed all those issues.
Thanks, Kelly.
Any questions? Anybody?
I'll run the meeting. Thank you.
Sorry.
Anybody have any questions? Henry, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thanks for being here this evening. Is Agape operating right now and providing services somewhere else?
Yes, we are on two seventeen North Main Street, and we've been here since two thousand eighteen, and we see an average of like twenty-plus clients on a weekly basis for whether it's dealing with financial problems, whether it's dealing with parenting issues. Our biggest thing that we do is parenting classes, and this last year, I know we gave out over thirty thousand diapers to mothers and families in need, where when someone comes down and has needs, we get them into our classes to help them out with parenting, and they can earn fifteen dollars in our credit to order all of our products and anything that they possibly need. One hundred percent of our services are, are, are free. You know, we don't charge for any of our services at all. We got letters from Judge Nielsen, judges court order parents to have to come and take our parenting classes. I mean, we are exactly the example of what a nonprofit really is. I mean, like I said, we have judges that court order parents into our parenting classes, and we do it for free.
But that's not happening in this building.
Not happening in this building. That's why we want to get to that building, right?
Right.
So, we have more room to do, we need more room for our clothes and products and everything else. We have, we have a clothes closet that is very large, that we do free clothes for any families that come in of need.
And this is hard for me to say, but when you acquired this building, there is an onerous on the buyer to do it, to due diligence and understand sort of what they were facing with acquiring this property. I don't know all the details on how you acquired it, if you got it donated, but it seems like that's, there should have been more due diligence on the front end, so you would, you would have known. You could have put contingencies in the sale to help, you know, maybe help with the burden of the taxes until you could get it re, recategorize, all that kind of stuff. It just seems like maybe the front end wasn't taken care of enough.
Well, I would have never thought that our nonprofit status wouldn't be accepted when we are exactly the epitome of what a nonprofit is, and as I looked up the statute, it shows in there that, you know, as you're remodeling a building to move into it, that you can acquire occupancy, and it shows underneath there, like churches, when they buy a property, that while they're building, it gets into a nonprofit status.
Well, they, they talked about, at least we're hearing, you don't have a set of plans, you haven't, you know, you don't have budgets set, you don't have building permits pulled. It would be maybe a different scenario if you had all that. Maybe it isn't.
We did have a.
You didn't have that.
We did have an attorney, we had a budget, sorry, not attorney, I'm sorry, we had an architect, and he gave a, we were moving in the building, they said we need to have plans for it. Everybody else was, architect went and surveyed it, looked at it all, and he said, hey, you know what, you're not changing any walls, you're not changing anything in here. He said, so you absolutely should just simply be able to move into the building, and he said, he stamped the exact blueprint that always was already made. And then when it went the, again, building inspector and Jared, them, they decided to say, hey, no, you need a full set of plans, state-approved plans, and the architect was like, what? He's like, I've never heard of that. He said, you don't need state-approved plans if you're not changing a single wall or doing anything in the building. We're leaving exactly the same as it was. We weren't, you know, adding on or tearing down, doing any of it.
Kelly, did you bring that architect here tonight?
I did not bring it tonight, sorry, no.
Okay.
Well, okay, thank you, sir. That's it for me.
Anybody else? Thanks, Henry. Anybody else? Any comments, questions? Anybody else that you brought with you? Kelly want to talk?
Mayor, I'd just like to ask our attorney a question. They cite.
Hold on, Scott. Let's, let's just let these guys.
Well, this is for Kelly all the time?
Yeah, this is still, Ross, if you want to. Just introduce yourself, please.
My name is Ross Borgward. First off, I'd like to address one thing that the attorney stated. I don't remember the exact page that it's on, but it is in the Department of Revenue's guidelines that state for tax exemption, the criteria that needs to be there is either a payment plan or paid in full, and Kelly has set up a payment plan with the county. So, that statement that the attorney stated is false. If you look up what it states in the Department of Revenue's Guidelines for the Assessor Handbook. So, that is number one. Number two, I would like to reiterate what Colin had stated as far as for having the, the assessor repeat the last comment that she made. Agape has been set up to benefit the community in everything that it does. As Kelly also said, he has lawyers, or the judge, actually doing court orders to have people go in there. So, that number one, when you actually look at the Department of Revenue's Guide for Assessors, states that it has to be a charitable and benefit the community to be a benevolent organization. Agape meets all of those things. I'm really hoping that all of you are reading through the entire handout because it clearly states what the Department of Revenue states for assessors, for guidelines, on what criteria is needed to be nonprofit and benevolent and to fit into the tax exemption. Agape fits every single thing. So, I really ask the council to take a look at the entire handout because it fits it through bullet point by bullet point and fits everything, and that is per Department of Revenue. That is what the assessor has to follow, and the assessor actually has to go to assessor's school every year to listen to that and to get guidance from the Department of Revenue. So, I'm really hoping that everybody is reading through this. If you haven't, I would highly recommend that you table this for another day, said everybody, or another meeting, so that you all can look through it because it, it is, it's cut and dry when you look through it. They're readying the building, been trying to ready the building, haven't been able to obtain the permits, and that's been on the city. So, that's all that I have to say.
Thank you, Ross. Anybody have any questions of Ross? Sorry, or Kelly, again. Kelly, anybody else that would like to speak?
The property, sorry, my name's Denise Leekus. I am the executive assistant at Agape Help Center. I am also one of the parenting class teachers, mentor, et cetera, you name it. Since the building was gifted per paying the BASS taxes on it, I have been drooling over trying to get into that building, and it seems like there's been roadblocks at every intersection. We could be doing so much more if we were in that building. My baby boutique right now is in a closet. Now, it's not very nice for parents and stuff to go shopping in a closet for what they need. Over there, I had lined out, oh my, what I could do. Our caring closet is in the basement and is not as large as it could be. People would rather give to us than to Goodwill because we provide it free to the community. Anybody, it doesn't matter where you live, it doesn't matter what you do, what, how much you make. If you have a desire to use what God has placed before you in a better manner by saving money on clothes so you can afford to buy food for your kids, that's what our caring closet is there for. If they choose to take classes, they can use the baby boutique with their credits. They can buy all their diapers, they can buy all their formula. We've had massive donations lately that I don't have room to even put of brand-new cribs, dressers, changing tables, you name it, that we would like to be able to actually put out and store safely without harm, and we could do that in that building. So, until we can get in there, we will continue to provide the services that we do where we are. But something has to be done to make this road a little easier. I believe it is God's plan that we go in there, and we need to get in there. So, we can continue to provide services for women and men. By the way, twenty-five percent of our clients right now are also men that are striving to be better fathers, that are looking for mentoring from other people, to be just better people in general. So, it's not just the women and children, it's also making better dads. What is going to help our country? When families stay together, and when people can be better parents, their children will be better people. We need to get this moving, and that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Danny. Denise?
My name is Steve Bowman. I live here in Wapaka. I donate to Agape. I know the good work that they do. They've been here more than six years. They're doing all they can in that small space on Main Street. They would have an opportunity to do so much more, and it just seems so short-sighted to deny them the ability to be a, a five oh one C-three status, not tax-exempt status, when they're having to throw money out for taxes that they wouldn't have to be paying if this could be lifted. I don't understand why there couldn't be some kind of contingent. Allow them to have the status, and if they fall away from that, if they aren't meeting your needs or the requirements a, a year from now, then penalize them. It just, to me, it just seems short-sighted, especially in a small town. If, if this were a big metropolis, you wouldn't notice the work that's being done. This is a small town, sixty-five hundred people, or whatever we are, and I think they're doing a great deal of good deeds and good work that, that Wapaka would, would miss, and you wouldn't miss it till it's gone, and I don't think you want to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Bowman. I'm a board member at the Agape Center. I'm newly appointed. I just want to say, I do work for Wapaka County. I work for the Behavioral Health Unit. I specifically deal with AODA clients. Our community is in such dire need for the services that Agape provides, okay? Our community is growing. We're getting, we're seeing lots of people coming in, you know, immigrants, or maybe that's the wrong polit, politically incorrect, but we are getting a lot of, our community is growing, and the AODA problem is growing as well, and the need is just, I mean, I'm exhausted. Let's just put it that way. I am exhausted dealing with the people that I deal with, the services that they're, they're asking for, and the county itself, Wapaka County, can't provide all of those services. So, we have been referring people to Agape for, you know, parenting classes, for, you know, clothing, counseling, you know, it, it's just, it's just a shame that these roadblocks have been set up for Agape, you know? It just seems like what, you know, can't you just work this out? Think of your community, think of the people of Wapaka. The need is great, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Kelly, anything else you want to add? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. That's it. All right, go ahead.
My name is Gina Cook. I'm on the board at the Agape Center. From the beginning, it appears that there have been roadblocks, even when we opened downtown in the small office. A good example of that is the building inspector that Kelly referred to, who came in and immediately made derogatory remarks about the fact that we were a Christian organization. So, we felt discriminated against almost immediately. We have, from the beginning, wanted to use that building for residential treatment for AODA and for a domestic violence shelter. It doesn't need new walls. It was set up, it's perfect. We just need to fix the plumbing and the roof. Unfortunately, all of our money, our excess funds, have gone to the city of Wapaka for taxes on a building that wasn't even habitable. We've had the good fortune now of talking to some people at the state level. If this isn't resolved at the city level, we are going to go to the state level. This, this is wrong, and I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but when a city employee walks in for an inspection and makes an immediate remark about art on the wall and how that shit has to go, we have a problem. So, I just want people to be aware that that is what we've been dealing with all along. So, every time one thing gets taken care of, there's another roadblock set up. The roof went on. When they say that not enough work was being done, that roof was over a hundred thousand dollars. We stopped what we were doing because we weren't even allowed to use the building for storage. We weren't allowed to have a rummage sale at the building to raise funds for Agape because we were told we couldn't do that, because the building wasn't habitable. But if we make it habitable, and we're not, we're not allowed, we're, we're stuck between a rock and a hard spot, and this has been going on for two years. And what is going on at this level is wrong, does not follow the state statute, and we will go to the next level if we have to. Thank you.
Hold on a second. I, I don't want to go back and forth here. You, you had your say. Thank you for that. Carrie or Steve, any, Attorney Sorenson, I'm sorry, any rebuttal to what has been said, any change of, of, or any thoughts you might have?
Again, just a couple of comments that I think are important. Number one, there's none of us that are saying it's not a nonprofit organization. It, it classifies itself. That's, that's a given. It is a nonprofit organization. It classifies, it, that's the criteria. If you read my memo, I say that right in the memo. That's not the issue. That has nothing to do with what we're talking about here today. Absolutely nothing to do with what we're talking about. The ownership of the building does not, is not the issue. The use is what the issue is. You have to differentiate between ownership and use. Now, I know you don't want to maybe do that because there's reasons you'd like not to do that, but that's the law. I didn't write the law. Your city assessor didn't write the law, but it is the law in the state of Wisconsin, and there's no question about that. I mean, they can threaten that they're going to take it to the state or take it to circuit court, they have that absolute right, but that doesn't change the law. The law is very, very clear that has to be used for a charitable purpose, and that means used. And if you look at the case that they talked about, then they suggest that that case gives evidence that they're working on fixing the building. That case might have had a lot of relevance. That case might have had a lot of relevance if sometime during 2022, somebody had moved into the building and started doing things. Because there was a six-month gap in that case between when they started the construction and no one was allowed in the building to when the first patients went in the building under their non-charitable status and non-charitable use. And that's what the Milwaukee case said, and that's the case they're wanting to use to suggest the Wisconsin state law says that if you're working on it, that means it's okay. That's not the law in the state of Wisconsin. That's a mischaracterization of the law, and I want you to understand that. The other thing that I think it's very important that you understand is that, well, I've mentioned that, is that the very concept is that we're not attacking the organization, we're not attacking the use of the, or their purpose or their organizational structure, that's not the issue, it's the use. And as far as the payment plan, I'm sorry, the statute again is very, very clear. If there's a payment plan, there would have been payments made, the only payment that's been made is $1,000. The only claim that could be made is for the payment that was made. The claim that was made to you was $7,000. They haven't paid $7,000. You can't claim something you haven't paid. You may say that's a technical error, but it's an error, and that's my job to tell you that. And so, I mean, I take a little offense to being told that I'm lying to you, I'm not. I researched this, I spent a lot of time on this, city administrator can tell you that, we didn't do this lightly, we've been looking at this since January, and I'm very confident in the statements I'm making. So, that would be the two cents. I don't know if that answers the question you were going to ask me before Scott, but that's...
Carrie, is there anything else that you want to add?
I did want to address the comment about, as an assessor, you know, we need to follow the property assessment manual, which is true, we do, but at the end of the day, the Wisconsin Property Assessment Manual is a guideline, and I, as an assessor, have to follow the law, which is what I've done. There is no wording in the statutes that a building readying itself for exempt purposes should be tax-exempt. It is stated in the manual, but that wording is not in the statutes, so...
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Colin, go ahead. Do you have a question of somebody?
I think it's for Carrie, but it could be for anyone, and maybe it's just a statement. I was going to ask her if she's been involved with assessing this building in the past. Maybe not. Yeah, over the past several years. As I look in the records, it seems that the assessment keeps going down, and went down significantly, and the tax burden's gone down significantly as well. I guess I just wanted to point that out, that they're not targeting somebody, it looks like they're doing an effective job at saying what it's worth and that sort of thing. But anyway, that was my point to say that, you know, compared to their tax bill last year, it dropped by half and then some, and I don't know if it's relevant or not, but anyway, that was the point.
Thank you. Colin, anybody else have any other comments? Go ahead. Cory?
Okay.
Sorry.
Of them or of...
If you have a question of someone, just ask who you want, but Cory's, let Cory go first.
Just a question for our assessor and perhaps the Agape people.
Do one at a time.
Okay, well, I wasn't, I'm not sure who this question pertains, so I just want to...
So you're asking me to decide?
No, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. In the memo from the appraiser, there's two lines in here that I guess I'm a little confused about. It says, "They have owned the building since 2021 and have not made any significant improvements." But then I'm hearing that there's a roof being put on, so does that not count as a significant improvement? Or, I guess I, I'm not quite understanding.
I wouldn't consider it a significant, I mean, yes, there's a lot of money involved there, but that's not, they haven't provided the plans, or at least they didn't to us, I don't know if they did to the city, about what they really planned on using the building for. Putting a new roof on wasn't getting us any closer to figuring that out. So I don't consider that, you know, significant improvements to the building. And when they, you know, they weren't, like we've all said here, they weren't pulling any more permits or anything like that to continue the process, to fix the plumbing or the, you know, the heating or whatever, you know, the issues were.
Okay. And then, I guess this would be for Agape, is this an accurate statement that no timeline has been provided for when things are going to be done?
As in a timeline, we would already wish we were in the building, I don't understand what you're saying with the timeline, and like I said, we came and applied for a correct zoning, and that was, the zoning was set by you guys, and then your building inspector turns it down, says they won't accept that thing, so we're stuck in a spot where we say, okay, you put this in as zoning, but then your building inspector says that they won't allow it and won't give us a permit. How are we supposed to get in the building when we can't get a permit to do that? And now they're saying, well, we should maybe get a CBRF or whatever, a zoning for a nursing home. We're not going to be in a nursing home, we don't want to be in a nursing home. You know, so it's in here, this, and this group is ones that have denied every one of our people to get a permit to get into the building, and as in significant dollars, it's like 100 and some thousand we put on the roof, that's 25% of the value of the building. I mean, we've done, I don't, you know, everything we could, everything they've asked for, we've given them examples, everything we possibly create, it was like, I don't know how many pages for this even to create, to put in here, I spent, you know, an endless amount of time, so I don't know what timeline, I mean, the timeline's on you, when can I get in the building?
Cory?
Thank you.
Yep. Scott?
This is for city staff, I guess, we've been hearing a lot of talk from Agape's point of view that we have not allowed permits to be pulled, somewhat of a stonewalling, I guess I want to hear our side in what, if any permits have been pulled and what have been denied, and, or just our side, what are we hearing here, otherwise I can't make a reasonable decision.
Yeah, thanks Scott. So I think there's a little confusion, I, you know, we're talking two things, obviously we're talking about the challenging of the letter of the law when it comes to the requirements for property to be tax-exempt, and we're talking about building code requirements in commercial buildings. And just as we hire an attorney for legal matters, an assessor for assessor matters, we also have a commercial building inspector who's an expert in that field. So it is my understanding that the things that have been asked to be presented to the building inspector have not been received. At some point, things for HVAC, plumbing, it was requested that state-approved plans be done, and then they can be reviewed and approved, hopefully, eventually, and then the permits can be issued. But until those are presented and reviewed and approved, we can't issue permits. So it's true, we haven't done the permits, but we haven't been given the information to do that. And I just want to remind everyone that, yeah, like, building code is also not something that's, that is, we hear about it frequently, right? Because people want it to be an easier process, and sometimes building code isn't, and that's because it's in place to protect the people that they're also serving too, when they're using that facility. So I hope that answers your question.
Henry, go ahead.
Yeah, my question's kind of in the same vein as Scott's. I'm trying to distill this down. Basically, this is a nonprofit, doing great work, been in our community 40 years, no one's questioning that. They found this building a gift, and maybe it was a big, it was just a little bit bigger, too big a bite to take, because if I'm understanding, a commercial building that large, you guys might be facing a million and a half or $2 million renovation, and you need capital, and you don't have capital. So it's sort of a chicken and the egg thing, until you can find the money to get your building built and updated the way it needs to in law or permits, building codes, excuse me. This issue of the taxes, there's really nothing that counts, or I think, at least for me, our hands are tied. And then that leads me to, is there a solution to this? We want, we've got a good group here, is there some way out of this that council can help assist, the staff can help, and basically get out from underneath that building and maybe pull back a little bit and rethink where you're at? Maybe this is not the site you need to be at. And again, I, again, this is your organization, but for us having to make the decision, I mean, I, it's, you're just in a really rock and a hard spot, and it's capital is the way I see it for you. And is there a way we could help make something happen where you can move on from this building and get into something a little better shape? Because I understand that very back wing has a lot of problems along the river, that building, but I said enough, I've rambled, so it's...
You're not, you're not asking a question.
You know, I'm trying, I'm trying to, we've got a great group here doing a lot of great work, and we got to find a way for them to get some more space, and this building probably isn't it.
Thanks, Henry. Anybody else? Dimitri, go ahead.
Okay, so, I'm a little confused because in the assessor's statement, she says that the manual states that a property under construction may be entitled to an exception, and so it sounds like it could be exempted per the property assessment manual that she is bound to abide by. So, I don't, that conflicts with what the attorney's saying, that there is no exception that can be granted during construction per state statutes, but the manual clearly says that they may be entitled to an exception, and I have to think that the manual was written by people who studied the law as well. So that leads me to question, I guess, the attorney's point of view on this, and maybe there's some section of the law that he hasn't seen yet perhaps. The other thing that strikes me is, again, the, has not made significant improvements since 2021, well, spending over $100,000 on a roof seems like a pretty significant improvement to me, so I don't know where that bar of significance crosses. Is it just a subjective decision, or is there some sort of hard criteria that can be used to determine whether $100,000 improvement is significant?
So, Dimitri, are you asking the attorney or the assessor a question, or are you making a, are you making a statement? I'm sorry.
Both, both. I mean, I'm kind of expressing some frustration.
Do you want an answer?
I would like the assessor to answer the question about, is significant improvements, is the bar for that just subjective, or is there some hard number that determines what qualifies as a significant improvement?
There's not a hard number, it's just that they need to get to the point where they're able to use the building, and if the roof is not making that happen, then it's not cutting it. And again, about the manual, the statutes, the law trumps, the statutes trump the manual. So the manual might state that, but the statutes do not. I can't, you can't just exempt every empty building out there. So if they were, you know, like the attorney said, the case that they cited, maybe he should be saying this, not me, but it was a process that was moving along very quickly. It was clearly an exempt organization, they were almost to the finish line, it was to the point of finishing construction and staffing the building. We're nowhere near that. The law does not allow me, as an assessor, to exempt this building.
Yeah, absolutely. I think you were asked a question.
Yeah, I want it very clear, the law is the law, there's nothing in the statute that allows a building that's not being used to be exempted, it's very clear. The case that was referred to was a case where part of the year it wasn't being used and part of the year it was being used, and during that part of the year that it wasn't being used, the city made a decision that it would not be tax-free during that period of time, and the court said, no, we're not going to let you divide up a year on a six-month when they were working on it during that entire six-month period. You know, case law, which is what they're talking about, has got to be looked at, the specifics of the case, that's not the situation here, there's nothing, there's nothing in the manual, which I know very well, I know the assessment manual, and I know exactly what we're talking about here, the manual is a guideline, and the guideline goes back to the case, and the case talks continual process over a period of time with approved plans. That's not what we have here. And I think, which, the other thing that I think is so significant, you understand, is you're bound by the law. There are many, many times we'd like to do something that the law doesn't allow us to do. This is one of those black and white rules, and yes, you're the council, you could decide not to abide by the rules, that's fine, the assessor and I will live with that, but we're here to tell you what the, what our rules are, what we live by, and I think it's important that you recognize that. We have all the sympathy in the world, Henry, for the projects and the ideas. I serve on foundation boards, and one of the first things we learn when we serve on a foundation board is never, ever take a gift that's going to cost you money that you don't have money to finish the project. And I can't tell you how many community foundations turn down gifts because it's going to cost them money and they don't have that money for that project. Now, that's the problem you have here, is you can't, but that can't be your problem in today's decision, that's a different day, a different topic, just like talking about what the planning commission or what the different employees said, that's a different issue. The issue is, was it properly assessed? We think it is, and should you deny the request for the rebate? And I think the answer is pretty clear. Thank you.
Thanks. Eric, go ahead.
I have a question for you, Kelly. So I haven't heard any numbers yet. Have you had anybody come in and give you a quote on everything that needs to be done?
Yes, yes, I have had a quote, the things that need to be done are the plumbing and the heating, electrical, everything in the building we had all done is all fine, it's just the plumbing needs to be redone and the heat, new heating system, and we had that done, you know, for phase one of the building. Absolutely, I can get those quotes for you, whatever, I had all temperature systems, do the heating, and I had cook plumbing, do the, for the assessment for the plumbing.
I mean, do you have a ballpark? I mean, is it another $100,000, another 200, is it a half a million?
Right, you're right, it was like 110,000 is what it is, and with the amount that we paid for our taxes, we're almost, we're almost there, we would have been there if it wasn't for all the money we paid in taxes. You know, right? And, but if I can ask a question though...
Hold on, we're in a council here, Kelly, I'll let you rebut in a second. Anybody else have any questions? Dave, go ahead.
Comment with a question probably for Steph. I agree with Henry, the law is the law, we have to go with that based on what I've heard. They're not going to give up their building when they put 130,000 in it and go somewhere else. That's a rock against another hard place. But Steph, on this tax receipt thing, I just don't understand, there's a $350 monthly something at the very bottom, monthly payment for what, and has it been paid?
Yes, that's the payment plan that the county...
I'm just asking the treasurer, you may know, I don't know, it's fine to...
I don't have the bill.
I don't have the bill.
Okay. Kelly, can you answer that?
That was a payment plan that the county proposed for, to us.
Proposed.
We said, yep, that would, yep.
That, will that be paid, has that been paid monthly as you're going now?
Yes, we probably, we might not have made, paid the last one. We probably need to get the other one in, I'm sure, yep. But, but I mean, we're right there, we're talking hundreds of thousands versus three hundred and fifty dollars.
Three hundred and fifty dollars monthly till, till the seven thousand's paid off, right?
I'm sorry?
So, uh, three hundred and fifty monthly until the seven thousand.
Correct, correct, yep. And they said if we just made that until we can actually see if we can get the tax exempted in place, they're like, hey, they worked with us and said, hey, we, we willing to do that for you because we.
Okay, so the answer, Dave.
You answer my question.
No, he didn't, really. The answer is, is that we're looking up on the county site right now, he paid one thousand dollars.
Yep.
And he agreed to pay three hundred and fifty dollars per month after that. He has not made any other payments.
I was going to ask a question, yes. I was wondering if that was, has been paid or, and I don't see any.
I'm answering your question.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, Colin.
Could, could anyone say when the roof was completed?
Kelly, you remember when?
I believe it was completed in two thousand twenty-two.
And then the assessment we're talking about was last summer, twenty twenty-three?
Yes, when we did the reassessment.
Right, so property, the, the thing we're talking about this WPAM says property under construction on the assessment date. So this property was not under construction on the assessment date. So there's, there's really, I, I think then we're done with talking about that because it wasn't under construction, unfortunately. I, I, I think that that's pretty obvious.
Any other counsel? Scott, you have another question?
Well, it's just, I'm getting a little muddled here with all the info we're getting. What are we as a council supposed to decide here?
Okay, so.
I mean, give me a definitive sentence, I guess.
All right, well, it's pretty simple, actually. Well, it's simple, but not simple.
Right.
Okay, so Agape has made a unlawful tax claim. So we either accept their claim, deny their claim, or I guess we could technically, do we have to do this within a certain amount of days? I don't even know that we can.
Ninety days.
Ninety days. So I don't even think that we can. Are we, are we hitting that ninety days? I don't even think, so we have to make a decision tonight.
Okay.
You either have to accept Agape's claim or not accept it.
And their claim is zero and our, and our pres, preserver says it's four seventy-seven something.
The taxes.
The tax, yeah.
Yes. Yep. Right. Any, any other counsel? Paul, you want to say something?
I just want to say thank you for that clarification.
Sure, sure. I, I should have brought that up right away, I'm sorry. Thanks for asking the question. Dimitri, go ahead.
And their claim is just as it pertains to the last year's taxes?
Yeah, I don't think you can go back any further if, if I'm right. Is that right, Kerry? That is their claim.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I don't think you, once, yeah.
No, you have to file by January thirty-first of the year you're making your claim. They did file for two thousand twenty-three for January. They did file before January thirty-first for the two thousand twenty-three. So it was by, they had him by January thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. And they did do that.
Okay.
But that's only for twenty-three.
Right.
That they can claim.
Although I, I think it's important that we all know this too, that they wanted to do this last year also and they didn't get their paperwork in on time. And actually, our assessor even gave them the opportunity to extend that and they still didn't get it in on time. So that's why we're into twenty twenty-three. Okay, so, Henry?
To, to Agape, did this process help clean up your governance documents and all your IRS filings? Did you get your IRS nonprofit status just in the last two years?
Yeah, we've continued to carry that and continued to have.
Right, but is, what, did you initially get it two years ago? You haven't had it for forty-six years?
No, we've had it six years ago. We got it in two thousand eighteen and continued.
Oh, I, I misunderstood, only six years, okay, because I wrote forty-six. I'm sorry. My hearing is, I'm sorry.
You'd be about five when you implied for.
You'd said that with, with that extension, that we didn't get our paperwork in. We'd got that paperwork in after the extension on time. We certainly did, I called and talked with Kerry in their office and we actually reapplied again. We didn't put in the claim for unlawful taxes, but we reapplied it all again. That's what you're talking about. It wasn't for the unlawful taxes, it was for the fact of reapplying for our tax exemption status.
Which is the same thing. It's the same thing.
It's not the same thing, but.
Okay, well, okay. Yeah, all right.
We did, we did get it in, we did.
All right, all right. Kelly, you, you wanted to ask a question, I didn't want to stop you, I just wanted to make sure the council had a chance to be heard. So if you still have a question.
No, I, I was just stating that, but also you're saying that it's against the, the law for the, the decision they can make, but yet the city can make the decision to say it's, it's tax exempt, correct?
Question is not whether.
Steve, you, I'm sorry, you've got to use your mic, you've got to use the microphone, so you guys have to battle over.
The question is not whether or not you're a tax exempt organization. The question is, was the assessment properly made? And your objection is saying that it was not properly made. So the question before the council tonight is, was the assessment properly made? You're saying it wasn't properly made because it shouldn't have been made in the first instance, Well, that's your claim. Yes, it is your claim. I can read the document.
Ross, Ross.
I'm sorry.
Sit down, Kelly can talk, but thank you. Kelly, any other comments that you want to make to council?
I don't know if we miscommunicated there, I was saying that the, can the council decide, the city themselves decide if it can be a tax exempt? Are they, do they have the power to say, hey, we want this to be a tax exempted building? Do they have the power to do that themselves?
Well, I think, look at me, Kelly, because I think you can answer that. I mean, you are allowed to have a tax claim, okay? So council does have the ability to agree with your tax claim. But as you've heard from our legalese, they're recommending that we don't do that because we would not be following state statutes by doing that. So, so you are having a hearing and you're not just having the hearing to talk, the council has to make a decision tonight on whether they agree with your claim or not agree with your claim, given the information that you gave us and given the information that we've heard from our legalese and our staff. And so that's where we're at.
Yes, yes, absolutely. I was just saying, you know what, not like it's, wouldn't be illegal for you to make whichever decision you want, as well as saying, I just didn't understand what you were saying, that it's unlawful for that decision to be made. I'm like, well, you guys can make whatever decision, it's not that it's going to be unlawful to you if you say, y'all, I agree, you should be just running back to the last year or whatever. It isn't going to be unlawful for that, correct?
Well, I, you would have to define all unlawful, but I would guess that if you went against state statutes, it would be unlawful.
Well, and what other rulings by our assessor on this very same topic have been made and it opens up a Pandora's box? Is it time to make a motion to move along here, Mayor?
I'm sorry, Henry, go ahead.
Are we ready for a motion or we need some more discussion?
You can make a motion at any time. There's no discussion.
I move that we deny the claim for unlawful taxes for twenty twenty-three filed by Agape.
Okay, we have a motion by Velicker. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion by Velicker, second by Hagan, that we deny Agape's unlawful tax claim. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I'd like, I'd like to please clarify why I'm doing, how, why I felt to make the motion. I think as a casual observer, before I was ever on council, I felt that that was a heck of an acquisition that you guys made. I was very excited for your group. But early on, you ran into some challenges and it just, to me, you're just in a situation, until you get some more capital, you're really going to be hard pressed. And I think, secondly, I think our staff has tried to work with you to come up with some solutions. I don't know of another nonprofit where our grant writer wrote a, a grant for them, wrote two. You know, I'm at the triathlon, can I get them over here to help write some grants for us? So I think the city, and trying to echo Aaron's point, comments early on, I think is trying to, you know, be reasonable in all of this. So that's, it was tough. That's my reasoning behind the, the motion.
Thanks. We're, we're still under discussion, we do have a motion on the floor. Paul.
Mayor, I move to call the question.
We have a motion by Hagan to call the question. Do we have a second? Well, call the question means that we would vote immediately on that.
You need a second on that?
We do.
Second.
We have a motion by Hagan, second by Velicker, that we call the question.
And you have to vote on my motion to call.
On the call the question.
Right. All right.
So you're, you're voting on calling the question here, all right? And we can, I don't think we need to do a roll call, but we, we'll just do, we'll see if this works. So to call the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no.
No.
We have eight ayes, one no, motion carries. All right, so we're back to the motion that, by Velicker, second by Hagan, that we deny Agape's unlawful tax claim. Barbara will take the roll.
Wait a minute.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, call the question.
By, by agreeing to this, by saying aye, are we saying we're denying it or are we saying opposite?
So the motion is to deny Agape's unlawful tax claim. So an aye would mean that you're denying the tax claim.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I needed to clarify that. Sorry, I thought you were going to make more discussion.
No, I want to say a word.
Okay. Barbara, call the roll.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
No.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
No.
Dimitri Martin?
No.
Six ayes, three noes, motion carried.
All right, so by that vote, the claim by Agape is denied. All right, and we'll move on in our agenda, but I'm going to ask that we take a, let's, let's make it a seven-minute recess, but we're going to be back in exactly seven minutes, okay?
Thank you for your words.
Man, these are the ones you don't like.
That isn't easy, is it?
This is a shit sandwich.
We knew it, we're going to get there.
I didn't catch that until you pointed it out and that really falls into the question, well, what was done during the timeframe that they were.
Did, any discussion about maybe leasing the property from him for a period of time? And number two, with the fundraising efforts on Lakeman, is there any consideration of their, some of their funding to pay for?
I don't think leasing was part of the conversation at all.
I can answer that. That was not a part of the conversation.
And at this point, we are with Lakeman, we are wanting to move forward with the concessions in bathroom projects, and we have very high-level designs right now that are in architect's hands, that he's going to actually bring it to a feasible development plan, which then we will take out to bid. So we don't yet know how much that concession and bathroom facility will be, and it may be over what we've currently fundraised for for Lakeman. If there's extra money, absolutely, but I don't think that that's going to happen.
Thank you.
Just a correction to Laura, she said we charge for parking. We do not. We charge just to view the game.
Lakeman.
Lakeman, I'm talking as Lakeman.
Thanks, Dave.
We mean Lakeman, yes.
Yep.
It's just an admission to the game. But if you don't take something like this and take advantage of potential space, they're really a big Sunday, not the typical Sunday, but a big Sunday. You can't park on Highway 54 or Royalton Street. You end up parking all the way down, well, we used to always park where Public Works is, all the way down to the car dealership and around the corners there. You get two cars in, cars in each side park, it's pretty tight walking and kids walk into the games and stuff, so there's definitely a need for parking space where it comes from. There's no other option.
I mean, I think this would get it off the street a lot, but you have a lot of games on the weekends, right? So conceivably you have Public Works parking. I mean, you've got Sunday games, so you'd have that whole, you know. I don't know, how many stalls is that, Justin, around your building?
Stalls around my building?
Yeah, for parking.
Not being inside your fence.
Yeah, Public Works, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I take great pride in it, but I don't currently own it. So along Harding Street?
Yeah, just along, you know, a public parking.
How much are you going to charge?
It's a lot of question. We haven't striped it yet, but there's like 13 stalls up there.
So it's not a ton, so having more would be good.
Dimitri, go ahead.
Is the space big enough to be used for another purpose when it's not being used for parking? Like maybe put a couple basketball hoops on each side?
I guess we haven't explored that yet.
I think it's absolutely big enough. You know, we haven't talked about it, but we, you know, we've talked a lot about pickleball courts and all that stuff, but I don't want to, you know, I know that's loud, but yes, it could be a multi-use thing if we decided that made sense.
Does it, the land, what I'll call behind it, I believe the river goes behind it, is that correct? And who owns that land?
And it does, there is some elevation change there.
Right, quite steep.
Mm-hmm.
Who owns that?
Steve Johnson.
Okay, so that's privately held. And then is there a storm drain in the road? If you pave it, you have to get permit to pave it from DNR, et cetera? Or can you put the water into a storm drain there?
Well, it'd be less than an acre of disturbance, so DNR permitting would probably be minimal. There's no storm drains there, so.
Okay. And how many parking spots you think you can get there?
I believe we were thinking around 30, 25 to 30. Once it's fully paved and stuff, and I think right now they've used it, Josh Peterson's Dimitri Martin. gotten permission to use it for some Lakeman gains, and I think they got about that many
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, next up, we have a request to purchase land at Lake, by Lakeman Field,
in there, too.
I'm sorry, I was just saying, you can't put pickleball right there, it's right next to somebody's house.
That's true.
and Laura is going to handle that one. So that's loud.
Yes, thanks, Mayor.
But yeah, I mean, any other, Scott, I'm sorry.
So as you know, with the building of the DPW building, some of the parking that we
I agree with Dave here, but we've got a burden of hand and all the money we've been
used for Lakeman Field over there is now lost, and parking has already been scarce, regardless of that situation.
putting into the upgrades of Lakeman Field, it was, it's like a, I don't call it a gift,
We've been exploring different ideas on how to make up this scarcity in parking and
it's going to cost us money, but boy, it's sure playing into our long-range plan here.
came across this property at 600 Harriet Street.
We've got to take this.
Yeah, and how many times have, has the city reached out and had to purchase things
You can see on page 86, the photo of where that's located. It's a little bit south and west of Lakeman Field.
and had somebody sell it to you actually for less than what it's worth?
It has come to our attention that he would be interested in selling this plot of land,
Yeah, exactly.
and it would offer parking anywhere between 20 and 40 cars.
Are we just voting on the purchase of it? We're not talking about voting on any sort of money to surface any.
So we have a verbal agreement with him that he would sell the property for $8,500 to the
The $8,500, that's all we're voting on.
city.
Motion to purchase the property at 600 Harriet Street for $8,500.
This is not a budgeted expense in our general fund. However, we do see high value in this land, knowing that it's an affordable price for
That's all we're voting on.
Motion by Dykstra, second by Nagel, that we approve Stormwater Easement for River
a lot. It can be used for parking, and if parking, we just don't need it someday down the road,
North cottages. Any discussion?
we can use this for housing.
Barbara, call the roll.
Scott Pritchatsky.
So it's, it's, it's a lot that can be used in different capacities.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Right now, it's zoned our one single-family residence district.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
It also has a future land use classification of low-density residential, so if we do end
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
up purchasing this land, this land, we will have to rezone through Jared's department. And we have some other estimates on here as well, such as if we rezone, we're going to have to get a certified survey map. If we do turn it into a parking lot, it could cost up to $35,000. We are not asking for approvals of any site prep or pavement work at this time. We simply would like to obtain this land so that we can use it in the future if need be down the road. We think this is an opportune time to get this. So, so I guess we would recommend the action to approve the city purchase of 600 Harriet Street for a total of $8,500.
Laura, can you just say where that money is going to come from?
Right, yeah, it'll come out of the general fund right now. Thank you.
All right, do we have questions or a motion? Go ahead, Aaron.
Do we know what the assessed value of that is?
Aaron, did you look that up at all?
It's more than.
It's more than that.
It's got to be way more.
Oh, yeah. Buildable one. I thought it was like $30,000, but I might be wrong.
You're getting a bargain.
Yeah. Colin, go ahead.
Is, does the seller have an implied understanding that it's supposed to be used for Lakeman Field?
Yes, he does.
So if that doesn't work out as a, a parking lot, for whatever reason?
Yeah.
What then?
He was not, it's not contingent upon the future use, so if it was turned to housing, that is not something that would change things.
He doesn't own any other property around there.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's a single lot, and he didn't put any contingencies on that whatsoever. Assessment is $26,500. Thanks, Barb. Henry, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead, Corey, he was first.
Corey, go ahead.
So, we're, we're looking to put a parking lot in, correct?
Yes, at this time.
So would people have to pay to use the parking lot for a game? Because I guess, I'm just, I have a little bit, I don't mind buying the land, but we're spending almost $45,000 on better parking.
Right now?
Well, but we eventually would, so would we be able to recoup that cost in any way?
So that would be a possibility. Right now, they don't, they only charge for parking during the tournament games, and that goes back to Lakeman, but that's certainly something that we could look into in the future.
Because, I mean, there's going to be maintenance on that, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Right.
Henry, go ahead.
Two quick questions. Did, wanted any discussion about maybe leasing the property from him for a period of time? And number two, with the fundraising efforts on Lakeman, is there any consideration of their, some of their funding to pay for?
I don't think leasing was part of the conversation at all.
I can answer that. That was not a part of the conversation.
And at this point, we are with Lakeman, we are wanting to move forward with the concessions in bathroom projects, and we have very high-level designs right now that are in architect's hands, that he's going to actually bring it to a feasible development plan, which then we will take out to bid. So we don't yet know how much that concession and bathroom facility will be, and it may be over what we've currently fundraised for for Lakeman. If there's extra money, absolutely, but I, I don't think that that's going to happen.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Just a correction to Laura, she said we charge for parking. We do not. We charge just to view the game.
Lakeman.
Lakeman, I'm talking as Lakeman.
Thanks, Dave, thank you.
We mean Lakeman, yes. It's just an admission to the game. But if you don't take something like this and take advantage of potential space, they're really a big Sunday, not the typical Sunday, but a big Sunday. You can't park on Highway 54 or Royalton Street. You end up parking all the way down, well, we used to always park where Public Works is, all the way down to the car dealership and around the corners there. You get two cars in, cars in each side park, it's pretty tight walking, and kids walk into the games and stuff, so there's definitely a need for parking space where it comes from. There's no other option.
I mean, I think this would get it off the street a lot, but you have a lot of games on the weekends, right? So conceivably you have Public Works parking. Right? I mean, you've got Sunday games, so you'd have that whole, you know. I don't know, how many stalls is that, Justin, around your building?
Stalls around my building?
Yeah, for parking.
Not being inside your fence.
Yeah, Public Works, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I take great pride in it, but I don't currently own it. So up along Harding Street?
Yeah, just along, you know, a public parking.
How much are you going to charge?
It's a lot of question. We have, we haven't striped it yet, but there's like 13 stalls up there.
So it's not a ton, so having more would be good.
Dimitri, go ahead.
Is the space big enough to be used for another purpose when it's not being used for parking? Like maybe put a couple basketball hoops on each side and?
I guess we haven't explored that yet.
I think it's absolutely big enough. You know, we haven't talked about it, but we, you know, we've talked a lot about pickleball courts and all that stuff, but I don't want to, you know, I know that's loud, but yes, it could be a multi-use thing if we decided that made sense.
Does it, the land, what I'll call behind it, I believe the river goes behind it, is that correct? And who owns that land?
And, and it does, there is some elevation change there.
Right, quite steep.
Mm-hmm.
Who owns that?
Steve Johnson.
Okay, so that's privately held. And then is there a storm drain on, in the road? If you pave it, do you have to get permit to pave it from DNR, et cetera? Or can you put the water into a storm drain there?
Well, it'd be less than an acre of disturbance, so DNR permitting would probably be minimal. There's no storm drains there, so.
Okay. And how many parking spots you think you can get there?
I believe we were thinking around 30, 25 to 30. Once it's fully paved and stuff, and I think right now they've used it, Josh Peterson's gotten permission to use it for some Lakeman gains, and I think they got, they got about that many in there, too.
I'm sorry, I was just saying, you can't put pickleball right there, it's right next to somebody's house.
That's true.
So that's loud. But yeah, I mean, any other, Scott, I'm sorry.
I agree with Dave here, but we've got a burden of hand and all the money we've been putting into the upgrades of Lakeman Field, it was, it's like a, I don't call it a gift, it's going to cost us money, but boy, it's, it's sure playing into our long-range plan here. We've got to take this.
Yeah, and how many times have, has the city reached out and had to purchase things and had somebody sell it to you actually for less than what it's worth?
Yeah, exactly.
Are we just voting on the purchase of it? We're not talking about voting on any sort of money to surface any.
The $8,500, that's all we're voting on.
Motion to purchase the property at 600 Harriet Street for $8,500.
Second.
Motion by Dykstra, second by Nagel, that we approve the purchase of the lot for an amount not to exceed $8,500 at 600 Harriet Street. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Wow, Council, you guys are chatty tonight here. Let's, let's move on to the goose roundup. Laura, you're still up.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, so we've been working with friends of Mayor and Shadow Lake, the Inland Waters Committee, and the beach to discuss whether or not we needed to do a goose roundup, and it has become very apparent in 23, 2023, that it is, it is, it is needed. We have an estimated number of 50 or so geese that reside on the two waterways. Our beach staff fill up to, fill about eight five-gallon buckets a day of feces every morning, which is, the typical is one five-gallon bucket. And the landowners have certainly noticed an increase in the presence of geese throughout the year of 2023, and we had our first meeting in March, and they said that they're already coming back. So due to the increase of Canada geese, ourselves, the Parks and Rec Department, and these other groups mentioned, we would like to conduct a 2024 goose roundup. In October, the Inland Waters Committee voted to spend $3,500 on their budget, and then the Inland Lakes Committee, or the District, which is this, voted to approve that as well. And I just wanted to also say another reason why we wanted to do the roundup is geese can become a public nuisance and potentially a physical danger. They, each goose can leave up to 1.5 pounds of feces a day, and they leave behind very concerning parasites, bacteria, and viruses, and fungus. And you can read more about that in the memo on which, just to name a few. So we are working closely with the USDA Wildlife Biologist, who is familiar with Wapaka. He has conducted roundups in the past, and so we would like for, we would like to, like to recommend the action to approve the 2024 goose roundup to occur around the month of June. It will be in coordination with when they are molting and unable to fly.
Did you say this? I can't remember. When's the last time? We've done roundups before. When's the last?
Yes, and I, and I went through the paperwork, and I think it was 2018, but I.
I'd say at least.
So it's been a while.
And Andrew was.
Yeah. Okay. So the recommendation is to recommend that we do the goose roundup in the month of June.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Martin, that we approve this with a cost of, to our budget of, or total cost is $3,500, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Scott.
Is that a hard, fast number?
I did check with him last fall, and then I checked with him this year, and he, he doesn't see that number changing.
Okay, good.
That's less than it was last time.
It's cheaper than the last time, I think we paid $5,000, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, so that's good.
Sounds good, bargain.
Maybe they're going to get more meat this time.
It's, uh.
Sorry.
It's all right, I just was going to make, I wonder if we're going to get the same level of public comment as last time we did this.
I'm sure you are.
Sure you are.
Yeah, you know, obviously voting for this, there are, for all the reasons that Laura's giving, that, that it needs to be done, there are people that are going to be concerned about this, and so you're probably going to get some comments from that. Staff will certainly get the comments, too.
And people at meetings.
Yeah, yes.
It's not that we don't love the geese.
It's not that we don't love the geese, we just want a little less of them.
Yeah. Scott, go ahead.
Are we just going to presumably restrict this to the South Park beach area, or are we going to zoom out a little bit if there's other places?
So they will, when they come, they come for the entire city of Wapaka.
Okay.
And. So due to the increase of Canada geese, um, ourselves, the Parks and Rec Department, and these other groups mentioned, we would like to conduct a twenty-twenty-four goose roundup. In October, the inland waters committee voted to spend thirty-five hundred dollars on their budget, and then the inland lakes committee, or the district, which is this, voted to approve that as well. And um, I just wanted to also say another reason why we wanted to do the roundup is geese can become a public nuisance and potentially a physical danger. They, um, each goose can leave up to one point five pounds of feces a day, and they leave behind very concerning parasites, bacteria, and viruses, and fungus. Um, and you can read more about that in the memo on which, uh, just to name a few. So um, we are working closely with the USDA Wildlife Biologist, who is familiar with Wapaka. He has conducted roundups in the past, and um, so we would like for, um, uh, we would like to, like to recommend the action to approve the twenty-twenty-four goose roundup to occur around the month of June. It will be in um, coordination with when they are molting and unable to fly.
Did you say this? I can't remember. When, when's the last time? We've done roundups before. When's the last time?
Yes, and I, and I went through the paperwork, and I think it was twenty-eighteen, but I.
I'd say at least that.
So it's been a while.
Yeah. And Andrew was, and then, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so the recommendation is to uh, recommend that we do the goose, goose roundup in the month of June.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Martin, that we approve this uh, with a cost of, uh, to our budget of, or total cost is thirty-five hundred dollars, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Scott?
Is that a hard, fast number?
I did check with him um, last fall, and then I checked with him to this year, and he, he doesn't see that number changing.
Okay, good.
That's less than it was last time.
Yeah, we paid.
It's cheaper than the last time. I think we paid five thousand. That's what I was asking.
Yeah. So that's good.
Sounds good. Bargain.
Maybe they're gonna get more meat this time.
Yeah.
It's uh.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. I just was gonna make, I wonder if we're gonna get the same level of public comment as last time we did this.
I'm sure you are.
Sure you are.
Yeah, I, you know, obviously, voting for this, uh, there are, for all the reasons that Laura's giving, that, that it needs to be done, there are people that are gonna be concerned about this. So you're probably gonna get some comments from that. Staff will certainly get the comments, too.
And people at meetings.
Yeah, yes.
It's not that we don't love the geese.
It's not that we don't love the geese. We just want a little less of them.
Yeah. Scott, go ahead.
Um, are we just gonna presumably restrict this to the South Park beach area? Or are we gonna zoom out a little bit if there's other places?
So they will, they, when they come, they come for the entire city of Wapaka.
Okay.
And, and what we need to do pending this approval is we will go around and get signatures of homeowners where the geese tend to come onto their land, and then we can use those permissions to round up the geese wherever they are on the day that the Wildlife Biologist comes to town.
Okay, ready to vote? And again, this is a contract, so we are going to do a roll call vote.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Demetri Martin?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, you got your walking papers, Laura. Thank you. Uh, next up, airport sanitary sewer extension uh, construction contract approvals. Mr. Barron's.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as usual, memo starts on page eighty-eight into eighty-nine of the packet, followed, oh, excuse me, to page ninety. Um, and then followed by a bunch of information uh, for this project. Uh, I'll note Brandon Herbert from Strand Associates is online and available for questions. Uh, our design engineer representative from Strand, so. This is uh, our airport sanitary sewer extension, uh, looking for approvals for several contracts. Uh, this is the final piece of that project. We procured a lift station uh, last, or a couple months ago. Uh, that was just one chunk, a major component of the entire project. This is for the rest of it, mainly uh, the underground pipes, both gravity and force main, so. We had sealed bids, and they were open on March twenty-first at two P M., not February twenty-first. Uh, received a total of five bids. The results of those bids are summarized in the table on that page. The full bid tab is included as a attachment, if you wanna look at those. Uh, I will note, we had a base bid and an alternate bid. So the base bid included uh, all the gravity and force main from Ferg Lane going to the east to the airport. Connecting the airport and foundry hangar, and then an alternate bid, which extended that line to the east of the foundry hangar. Now, the alternate bid got smaller during the design phase. We initially had it in there as a potential for a cost savings measure. But the change came when uh, looking into the foundry and how to get them connected. Initially, we assumed their septic system was on the west side of the, of their hangar. Foundry, a foundry person found a hand-sketched document deep in a file cabinet, found out it was actually on the east side. So we had to change kind of late in the game, and it made that uh, number change quite a bit. So as we look at these numbers, uh, we are over our original budgeted amount uh, for the project uh, by roughly two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. But we're still pushing for approval of this project. Uh, we feel that the sewer utility can absorb this overrun. Uh, listed the number of reasons uh, in the memo. I'll go over them briefly. Uh, the last three years, our borrow savings uh, have been three hundred sixty-six thousand, so we could contribute that uh, to the project or to the entire fund. Uh, our net operating budget for the sewer utility in the last three years has averaged about a two hundred thousand dollar positive gain, which means our net operating budget after twenty-twenty-three, pending uh, what the audit shows us, uh, should be at least one point nine million uh, again, in net operating funds. So that's above uh, what is recommended um, of one point eight having in our reserve funds. We did throw these numbers past R W Baird, our financial advisors. Uh, they indicated a comfort level uh, that this increase of roughly two hundred thousand would not impact our future coverage ratios. So again, our revenues over expenses shows kind of a general number on the health of the facility, or the fund, excuse me. Um, showing the, the budget versus the actual, uh, to kind of help explain where things may have changed or altered throughout the years, and listing those reasons there, assuming you would have those. Listed just a handful of things that came up um, higher than we expected. So first off, we have to pay for electrical move of WPS an amount of seventy-three thousand dollars. Working with WPS, that is something that um, their utility rate payer should not have to pay for our u- utility uh, rates. So it's something we are on the hook of, or for, excuse me. We have an item in there for trench de-watering. So we did geotechnical investigation. There was perched groundwater in one of the borings, so we assumed there would be water in the trench. Uh, assuming that would be roughly thirty thousand. The bid we received, well, varied, um, but the bid that we're looking for approval for was a hundred thousand dollars, so much higher than we were anticipating. Lift station wet well construction, we budgeted roughly two hundred sixty thousand for that. We received the bid at four hundred and seventy-nine, so that was definitely a much higher uh, cost. Moving forward, we are looking at ways to control these overruns. Um, there is a construction administration contract in here from Strand. Uh, they have agreed to reduce their administrative fee by eight thousand dollars. We're working with WPS on that total amount. Uh, we have a few ideas in our minds. We've had some discussions. Uh, one is with a light pole at Parish Lane on how to do that in a more cost-effective way. Another one is to work with the contract to reduce that de-watering, uh, lump sum amount. And then finally, we will receive uh, payments upfront from the development that we have agreement with and the foundry. So um, of the cost controlling, I mean, those are not s- ones that have dollar amounts are set in stone. The other two, we're gonna continue to, to work on. So this is um, Wentzey Sewer Water and Sewer Utility Board, they're recommending uh, these uh, three actions from the council. Uh, the first one is a contract with Josert Brothers uh, as the low apparent bid uh, for the amount that's shown there. The second one is uh, for authorizing uh, administrative uh, construction contract with Strand. I would note that that number, thirty-one thousand uh, is a typo. It should be thirty-three thousand, so that's my error. And then finally, authorizing the electrical move from WPS in the mount shown as well. There's a lot of information in there, and I know I said a lot here, so I will open it up to discussion or questions.
Good. So you, thanks. Um, I just wanna make sure I understand. So he gave, uh, Justin gave you the background on what we budgeted and what the, what the amounts are coming out to, and and so the request is really to approve these, knowing that we're gonna have to dig into the sewer reserve because we have not borrowed enough money for that. But let's not muddy the water. It's, it's really to approve these three projects, okay? We are so used to uh, at, at least as, in my memory is, is that usually when we go out to, to bid for these things, they usually come underbid. So a little surprising that we came in overbid on this, and luckily, the, the sewer utility revenue bond does have reserves that we could be able to use that because, you know, we're, we're not gonna go back and try and borrow more money. That's, that's already been done. So luckily, we have that. If we didn't have that, I'm not sure what we would have done to be able to make that happen. But we do, so, so the funds are available. And uh, hopefully, we work harder to, to make sure that our bids are a lot closer than, than that dollar amount in the future. I think that's been relayed to Strand also on this.
Um, may, may I just address that briefly, if I could, Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say that Strand's estimate, going back quite a ways on the project, had been about a hun- one point six million dollars. Um, so on page uh, eighty-nine of the packet, um, Justin had a construction total cost of the lift station, um, which the city procured, the alternate bid and the base bid of just over one point six million. Um, and so our, our estimate has actually been pretty in line with that for, for quite a while. Um, and we knew that that was um, higher than the city had originally uh, planned on with the, the one point five million um, budget. And so that's why we had in- inserted that alternate bid, was to try and pull that from one point six down to closer to one point five if possible. Um, and then, of course, we were hoping for, you know, some lower numbers than we got. And, and then one of the big things um, was the, the seventy-three thousand for the electric utility move. Uh, we identified, you know, pretty much immediately when we were surveying that there was gonna be an issue with the electric lines there, and, and we tailored our design as much as we could to get out of their way. Um, they only have to move, you know, it's, in the grand scheme of the project, which is almost five thousand feet long, they, they don't have to move a, a lot of that length. Um, but I guess that dollar value, you know, added up, and we just, we weren't sure what that dollar value was going to be until real recently. Um, so that's, that certainly hurt as well in terms of the, the total cost of the project. Um, so, you know, and then some of the other things that Justin has very accurately pointed out is the difference between, you know, estimates and how the bids came in. It's sometimes very difficult with um, things like de-watering or the lift station um, lump sum item to predict where a contractor uh, might put their, their costs. Um, so our, our total estimate for the project was in the one point four million dollar range. Um, and so if you were to look at the summary of the bids, it, um, they're actually pretty, pretty close to that one point four. So I, I guess I just wanted to a- address that, that um, I actually felt like these uh, the bids were pretty close to what our estimate was, going back to say a sixty percent design level. Um, and then with our final estimate as well. Um, we were just, you know, hoping for lower numbers, and we had put that alternate bid in, like I said, to try and, you know, be able to, if, if what needed, you know, pull, pull a small part, portion of the project out and get closer to the originally budgeted value.
Hey, Brandon. Yeah, thanks for that. So we, we based our borrow on sixty per- I forgot this, but we based our, our borrow on sixty percent of of uh, the, the completion of the bid process, as we could say. Is that, is that normal? I mean, should, should we be more concerned about eighty percent or being a hundred percent before we decide to do that?
Um, you're saying like get to a point where the project is a hundred percent designed with like a final estimate?
Yeah.
Um, well, uh, I, I mean, that would be certainly more conservative, but that would probably translate to you, you know, kind of building projects maybe a, a year later. You know, you'd have to move design into almost a previous year to get that number, you know, prior to a budgeting process beginning.
Yeah, and then if you wait, then the next year, it's probably gonna cost more anyway, so, yeah.
Right, right, yeah. It's, it's a little bit of a chicken or the egg type scenario.
Sure. Thanks for that. Uh, Paul?
One of the things I had brought up in, in Sewer and Water is that there's no contingency with this new bid. Um, and so Justin said he'd make everything happen correctly.
There we go.
Yep.
Yeah, oh, there, so there was no built-in contingency?
No.
Or there was?
Then he blamed Aaron if, if it didn't go there.
Let me clarify. We, Aaron and I discussed contingency, because a project like this, we usually build in for a worst-case scenario. Since we're already over budget, we decided no contingency, uh, and we're gonna try and hold them to this number. And if there is a major overrun, that would require a return back to council, so.
There's nothing wrong with that. No.
Right, not at all.
No, so, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just gonna say that would, um, I don't need to repeat what Justin said, but it would be in the form of a change order that you would need to approve.
Henry, you had done it.
Well, I, I, I think we're obligated, right? We have a development agreement, so we have to do this project. It's not gonna get any cheaper. Opens up a lot of acreage out there, which will be great, and will take some time to build out, I'm sure. But Justin, you didn't address in your uh, your uh, memo, the ability to special assess here. So we could come, I mean, you got a lot of leeway how you set those up. You could just special assess for the overrun amount. Special, you know, uh, or whatever, however the council wants to divvy it out, but there's some other income coming in on this project if we special assess, right?
Right, so like we mentioned last meeting, we've been working on that. And uh, Brandon has a very complex table he's been putting together. And not only just runway drive is gonna benefit from this, we are targeting two other future development areas that could connect. Now that, we have the ability, since this lift station is going in, could, that cost can be spread out even further. So the, the runway drive property should not be the only ones that cover the cost for that lift station, because it's has, it's been built to a certain size. The pipes have been upsized to serve a much larger area. So we're, it's, it's complicated. I know you've been through that, and uh, so we're still working on it, but yes, I mean, to your point.
So as a council member, I'm feeling less concerned about the overrun. We do have that mechanism to recoup some more money that you haven't addressed.
Right.
Other questions? Go ahead.
So, Aaron, this, we still have a business that's looking to come in after this is complete. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. We're still expecting that uh, project that we're in that development agreement with to start this summer. If something happened in which it wasn't completed at the timeline that they said, that in their contract, they are still um, responsible for that hundred eighteen thousand dollars that Justin refers to, and that's due uh, by the end of December of this year. But we have no reason to believe that that's not going to happen.
But we should see a lot of value added despite even being a little bit over on this project.
You're, you're talking about improvements to the project.
Jobs, right, yes.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Move to approve?
Motion by Martin.
Second.
Second by Hagan, that we approve uh, are we okay with doing all three of these together? And, and I mean, I guess if you agree to all of them, I guess we're okay.
That's the way we did it at Sewer and Water.
Okay, well, that doesn't mean you did it right.
That's what I told him.
Who cared about me? Who cared about me?
That's what I told him, remember?
Okay, well, that's the way we have it in the packet, so we'll, we'll go ahead unless uh, unless we, you know, get a, uh, some kind of vote that doesn't make sense to us. But, all right, so we're approving uh, the uh, the amount for Josert Brothers at one million four hundred and twenty-four thousand, six sixty-four ninety-nine cents. Uh, Strand Construction Administrative Contract not to exceed thirty-three thousand, and uh, WPS getting their seventy-three thousand, two sixty-three fifty-six. And any over, uh, the over amount will be taken out of the sewer utility revenue bonds. Otherwise, uh, this is coming out of the borrow that we've done for twenty-twenty-four. That was your motion, right, Demetri?
Yes, exactly.
Any other questions?
All three things.
Uh, Barbara, call the roll.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Demetri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, uh, next up, thank you, Justin. Uh, next up, uh, we have uh, three ordinances that we have uh, public hearings for. These are both first readings, uh, so we'll go through these, make sure that uh, anybody online that didn't get the opportunity to listen to the public hearing, uh, they'll know what these are about. Uh, so let's start with ordinance number zero-three, twenty-twenty-four. Jared, you wanna start with that one?
Happy to. Uh, this one starts on page one-thirty-two of your packets. A red line is on one-thirty-four. This is a, a cleanup, uh, so zero lot line common wall developments were added to the B through, or to the R three uh, multifamily district. Um, as such, being added, uh, there are specific or lesser dimensional standards for the lot that better assist those housing developments in working on a lot. So um, this exact phrase that is proposing being, proposed being added to R three is already in the R two district. It's just a cleanup again because we added that land use that was in the R two also to R three, which then should come with this additional um, lot standard reduction to make it work. So happy to take any questions now or after the meeting.
All right, anybody have any questions? Again, this is first reading, so if we follow our normal process, you will see the second reading uh, at our April sixteenth uh, council meeting. All right, uh, next one up is uh, ordinance number zero-four, twenty-twenty-four. This is also the first reading, and we did have a public hearing before our council meeting tonight. Here?
This one starts on page one-thirty-five of your packets. Uh, red line is on one-thirty-six. Uh, this is again relating to zero-
This is again relating to zero lot line or common wall, single-family attached developments. And this is just outlining the process that they need to go through to be created. We are just making sure that the proper language is in there, that it all makes sense for when staff follows this process, or a potential developer looks at this process to follow it, to do this development.
All right, anybody have any questions on this one? Again, April 16th, we'll be looking at the second reading of this. Next up, then we have ordinance number 06, 2024. And again, this was the first reading of this one. Here?
This one starts on page 137 of your packets, with a red line starting on page 142. Many of this is just, or a lot of this is just cleanup, making the language consistent in the first two sections. The big change is on the red line, you can see on page 144. With a class two co-location, it's really just adding extra equipment to a tower, no substantial changes. We did have it in our code that that would be a conditional use permit, however, it is not possible to adhere to the 45-day shot clock per state statute and go through a conditional use permit hearing process. So what would happen after the 45 days is it is automatically approved. So it, it's just not really feasible with special meetings, and when looking at what's being looked at, it's just not necessary to have a conditional use permit. So staff felt as though a site plan was the most applicable process to go through and would adhere to the 45-day shot clock. So that is really the big change that is happening to this section. Rest is just cleanup.
Shot clock, I like that. All right, that was the first reading. Again, we'll see this April 16th for a second reading. Next up, license report 1669. This is operators or bartenders license. We have one individual on there looking for a motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Nagel, that we approve license report number 1669. Any discussion?
I got-
Yeah, go ahead.
Mine says 1670, but maybe that's wrong.
No, it does. Thanks a lot. Barb.
That's my fault.
Okay, it, it is 1670.
Yeah.
All right.
Proceed. Sorry.
No, thank you. I got some more ammunition against Barb.
Sorry, Barb.
Six, so it's corrected to 1670. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Next up, we have WPS easement requests for Lakebun Field. We're back to Lakebun Field. Laura?
Thanks, Mayor. So we received a letter from WPS that they need a temporary easement to put in additional electricity, additional power, so that we can install our new light system. And then once they are done, and you can see where that easement's going to be on page seven of the, the memo. Once that is done, then WPS will create a final exhibit for recording and adjust if changes occur in the field. So, yeah, motion to appro, or, the recommended action is to approve the WPS easement document, numbered 3318337.
Laura's ready to go.
Motion to approve.
Second.
She's making her own motions, too. This is good. That's a first. Motion, we'll just sit back and watch you guys do it. Motion by Velicker, second by Olson, that we approve of the WPS easement request for Lakebun Field. Any discussion? We're gonna take a roll call here.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Colin Dextrow?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, we're down to communications recommendations of the mayor. Real quick here, a couple of things. One is, like I said before, our reorganization meeting is April 16th. That's when we put together boards and commissions and committees. So if you have any specific committee or commission or board, committee, commission or board that you wanna be on, let me know, or let Aaron know. We do have some vacancies that we have to fill. One is on planning commission that I remember. Barb, we'll, we'll get those out, the ones that are, are vacant to people, so they can, they can look at that. But if you have one that you specifically wanna be on that you're not on, or you wanna stay on one that you're on, let me know, because there, you know, who knows? There might be some changes there. And again, I just wanna thank, it's been a long night. Appreciate everybody's hard work through this whole process, not just the Agape thing, but everything that we've done tonight. It was, I feel like it was a good meeting, so. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Hagan?
Second.
Olson? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. We're adjourned at 8:37 PM. Have a great night, everybody.